Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Wednesday, June 20th, Laramie County Community College Board of Trustees Business Meeting. First item on the agenda, Bill requested that he have something to say, so I'm gonna give Bill the floor.
Well, it involves number 24 of community development and what we've just been talking about. And I want to tell you that Lisa Murby did a fabulous job with an art show that was here last, and the art reception and everything, and there was a huge crowd here. And it was a very, very fine event. And I'm sorry more of the trustees weren't there, but it was very, very excellent. And she is the one who took charge of it and worked with the clays to make it perfect.
Great.
And it was a wonderful art display, too.
Then I think we have a round of applause.
Thanks, Lisa.
Mr. Chairman, I have to clarify something if I might.
Okay, yes, I'll give you the floor.
He has actually confused me with Lisa Trimble and the foundation team. I was there to assist them, but I must, for the record, clarify that Lisa Trimble actually ran the whole show. But we were all working well as a team.
They said Lisa, so I assumed it was you.
Yes, well, we both worked together, but Lisa Trimble deserves all the credit.
Well, she can get a hand of applause, too.
Anyway, it was a very fine event.
Great.
I'm sorry more of you couldn't be here.
Okay, as we've had one item to chat about, we are going to recess our regular business meeting to conduct a public hearing on a one-mil levy. So I will call to order the public hearing of the one-mil levy. And would like Dr. Schaefer to give us a staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As many of you know, and I believe you've, many of you have been through this process before, Wyoming State Statute 2118-303B actually gives the community colleges the authorization to approve up to one mil on the assessed value of the district for a period of two years. And these funds, according to the state statute, can be used for the regular support and operation of the college. LCCC trustees have approved a one mil for the past 26 years, I believe. So it has a longstanding tradition and has been a critical element of the college's budget for many, many years. Historically, these funds have been used really for two purposes. To fund strategic activities of the college and then also to support outreach efforts. So, for example, the activities that we have in Pine Bluffs, the educational program there was a way to illustrate to the taxpayers, especially outside of the city proper here in Cheyenne, that they do receive value for the one mil taxation. The intent has been, and always it was utilized, to my understanding, was to look at these funds as strategic investments into things the campus has wanted to do. And so, early on in 2000s, we started making investment in the technological infrastructure to get ahead of the curve on the infrastructure and the technology that we needed to embrace the changes in higher education, distance learning, wired communities, wireless environment, and those types of things. Unfortunately, between then and now, we've had a couple of things that have happened that have inhibited our ability to move some of those ongoing expenditures off of the one mil, specifically the integrated technology support. Part of that was some budget reductions that we had in the mid-2000s, if I understand correctly. And then, to be quite honest with you, part of it is just the leadership changes and the turnover haven't necessarily focused our ability to move those very mature activities, our IT services, off of the one mil into the general fund to free up those dollars to be more strategically invested. This year, we're starting to get back to that, based on your direction, to be able to focus those funds on strategic needs of the institution. We have started to move those base commitments off of there, not as much as what we would have liked, but we would continue to do that. We just simply need those resources for the IT services. The general fund budget does not allow to move them all over at this time. But we have made a conscious effort to do that. Also, within this budget includes funding for institutional planning, which has been a priority of you as a board, have the resources available to plan for our facilities plan, as well as resources for critical professional development to help keep our faculty and staff abreast of and up to speed on many of the changes within their various disciplines. And so, this is a critical element to LCCC's funding. It is within your hands to approve the continuance of that for another two years. And it is my recommendation, as you'll hear back in the business meeting, that you do approve that continuation. So, Mr. Chairman, that's the presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I'm gonna just switch three and four and kind of open up board discussion, if there is any board discussion, in regards to the one mil.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just state the obvious. We have no other source for funding of these activities at the present time. And that's why I would almost move immediately to approve this recommendation.
I'll second his recommendation.
Well, we're gonna move that to the business meeting, because that's when we actually can approve it. We need to hold a public hearing first, but I think you're...
I'm ahead of myself.
You, yes, you are.
He made me do it.
So...
See how easy he is to lead?
So, I guess in summary, Joe, what we're talking about is we've got our IT services, which are a good, close to three-quarters of this is what we fund out of it. And I guess the other thing to make sure that people do understand is, a lot of schools, and we do break it out, and I think rightfully so, because we can at least track expenditures a little easier on ourselves if we do give direction for strategic resources. But many colleges, and I think all colleges in the state of Wyoming, am I correct, do take advantage of the one mil fund. And it just really effectively goes into their general operating account. So, I think at least what we have chatted about, and it's not what we're gonna vote on, but I'm trying to get it clear in my head, is into the future, we are going to try to segregate. I mean, those funds are already segregated. We are going to try to plug our strategic initiatives, i.e. planning-type resources that we think we're gonna need to continue to move forward in the college. And I guess our expectation is to see that in next year's budget, those of us that will be here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I would just wonder if we have or when we might begin to look at how we could free up a little bit more for some of those strategic activities. Is there any preliminary perspective as to how some of that, what might be moved, so we can have a little more of a board for planning?
Certainly within the fiscal year 2014 budget. Because of where we're at with the FY '13 budget, it's not impossible, but it does cause ripples throughout a process that, whether good or bad, has taken quite a few months to get there. But without a doubt, I've heard your interest in freeing up these funds for strategic initiatives. That's been the traditional use. We can get back to the focus on that, and we will certainly do that within the FY '14 budget and have conversation well in advance of that to find out what it is you, as a board, believe we need to be looking at for strategic initiatives, so we can plan for those accordingly. And that is the reason why you'll see $114,000 in here for planning purposes, institutional planning purposes.
Okay, any other board discussion? If not, I'd like to call for any public comment or questions? Anyone from the public? Last call, anyone from the public? Okay, if not, I am going to adjourn the public hearing. And we will move on and reconvene our regular business meeting. Okay, first, next topic, minutes, and we have two sets of minutes to approve. So I will look to the April 18th, 2012 set of minutes. Hopefully, folks have had a chance to review them. And if there are no comments or changes, revisions, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
Okay, for April 18th, 2012. Any other discussion? Discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of April 18th minutes have been approved. May 16th, 2012 minutes.
I'll move approval.
Okay, second, any discussion? Discussion? Okay, if not, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much for approving the minutes. Okay, reports to the board. SGA, Student Government Associations, will resume in the fall. Hopefully, they're all having fruitful summers. Staff Senate. Are these different names that we have now? Okay. You're really throwing me off here.
I'm here to...
I'm used to ESSCC, all these letters. Staff Senate, go ahead, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I recall a conversation last spring with Jeff Schmittl, President of Faculty Senate, that both of us were looking to let other people have opportunities for faculty and staff to represent, and I don't know how the ball rolled, but we're both back in it for another year. But anyway, there was, we've been doing a lot of planning and some discussion on things. And what had happened is, when we got out there to make sure that the staff knew that ESSC represented both classified and professional, there was a lot of professional that felt like ESSC actually represented the classified. So, they had asked that, as we go into this new approach with the new college council and stuff, that we changed the name to make sure it was embodied to both sides of the staff. So, for a couple of weeks there, we actually just shortened it up to Staff Council. And then, the next ESSC meeting, if you wanna call it, but Staff Council meeting, we had. We had people calling, emailing, even a few showed up to the meeting, which we found that was cool, because they were all energetic to show up for what they thought was a college council staff-side meeting, and that wasn't the case. So, we discussed it again, and after a little bit of research around, and going off the model of University of Wyoming, they have a Faculty Senate and a Staff Senate. So we thought we would just go that route, and hopefully that doesn't create any offense to Faculty Senate. But being the two largest employee portions of the college, it just kind of makes sense that we both have Senate attached to us, whether it's faculty or staff. So we will now, in the future, be called Staff Senate. We also did elections, and something we did also change with the new college council that it allows Staff Senate to appoint a classified member to college council and a professional member to college council. And there was some discussion there about, you know, some division or whatever. And so Staff Senate has decided to stay together as a whole for both sides of staff. But what we did change was, we will have a vice president for the classified side and a vice president for the professional side, to make sure we got equal representation and stuff going from both. Once that was figured out, those representatives, which is Kim Adams from Classified and Jody Weppner from Professional, which keeps a little bit of continuity on the college council side, they automatically became vice presidents of Staff Senate. And this is going to be a trial thing for a year to make sure that vice president of Staff Senate and also trying to be a member of college council is not too overwhelming. So, we're gonna try that for a year, and if it works, then that will become the new norm that the two VPs, one from each side, will also be college council members. We also did a selection process as you... I'm sorry, let me back up a second. We also split up the Treasury and Secretary portions, just to take a little bit of the load off, because obviously we all have primary positions above the Staff Senate. But Christine Sauerds stayed on as secretary, and then Tiffany Gutierrez has come back on as secretary. Did I get that right? Yeah, Christine's the Secretary, the Treasurer, and I keep getting those two confused. And Tiffany will be the secretary. So, the other thing we did do was a selection process. We had to do a runoff, but we've, the classified staff has selected...
Who?
Aaron, that's what I was getting stuck on. Aaron Castile-Hatfield, out of the mailroom, and Vito Malazzo, out of financial aid. Those would be the other two classified college council representatives. And professional side, the professional staff re-elected Alex Matthews out of HR, and they've also elected Chrissy Rithrow out of the council and body. So, glad to have them all on board, and we seem to be ready to go. This past year, as we closed it out, was very successful. I put a lot of that on the leadership change. The staff is more and more willing to be involved with the staff functions that are going on on campus. So, it was a good year. We just got done with the retreat, where we nearly doubled our numbers from the past. And then, obviously, if you were in attendance, I'm sorry, I was gorilling, so I'm not sure who was there. And Kevin, thank you, Dr. Gilte, for coming to my rescue at the hot dog grill. And I know I did see Carol there also, so I appreciate everybody came out. It seemed to be a huge success at the picnic last week, and we look forward to a lot of great things. Any questions from our minutes, or anything from the...
Any questions for Kevin on the Staff Senate? Hold on, did I get that right? Staff Senate, okay. Okay, thanks, Kevin. Our next report will be the Faculty Senate. Jeff Schmittl?
All right, I obviously don't have much to report, because we haven't had any Faculty Senate meetings since the last time we talked. But I just wanted to thank and congratulate Dr. Jim Johns for stepping in as our interim Vice President of Academic Affairs. I think faculty are happy that you were able to do that, and we appreciate that. I don't know if we'll get much of a chance to work with you, but we do appreciate you stepping in and helping out, and so that's all I really had.
Does anybody have anything for Jeff?
No.
Thank you, sir.
That was easy.
Extremely easy.
Don't get used to it, Jeff.
Okay, LCCC Education Association, Les.
Thank you, Chairman and board members. I don't have a whole lot to report either, because we haven't had that much activity. However, I'd say we're very excited to have Jim Johns as our actual Vice President have to report directly to him, so I'm rounding him up a little bit tonight. But we are excited to have him, working with him. I went to the Staff Senate meeting on accident, found out more about it, so thank you, Kevin, for that. Thought we were there to vote on something. I think that's a good move. We had another meeting today with the President, and I thought it was very productive. We spoke about faculty, staff retention, and some other budget issues that are a concern to the Education Association. We don't have any overturning issues this summer. We'll be working on some things. I'll be talking to Kevin and Jeff, too, and see if there's things we can work on together. So I'm looking forward to doing that as we go back into August, when we bring the staff back, because a lot of our members are off-contract right now, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions of Les?
Thank you.
No questions, thank you, Les. Okay, moving right along. Item number three, Presidents' Reports. Dr. Joe Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will try to be brief, but just want to update a couple of things. First, just a quick update on facilities planning. You asked me, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that this was part of the updates, and I'm happy to do that. We have a couple of things to report. We are nearing completion of the process leading to the updated Level One for the University Student Center on campus. I believe we met with University of Wyoming folks yesterday and have met with faculty, students, student services, and other groups. And Stefan Pappas is working on the update of that. And we'll be meeting on Friday, just as a recap, with Carol, Stefan, and myself. And hopefully, we'll have something to share with you very, very soon, in terms of that update to that plan. It has not been released in the paper yet, I don't think, but the University of Wyoming and LCCC have named and established a joint Level One Planning Committee for the Albany County Campus Expansion on the university's property. We anticipate that that committee will meet for its first time this summer and then really start ramping up its planning process over the fall. And so, we're making progress there. Dr. Lynn Stahlmecker, over at Albany County Campus, will be the co-chair from the LCCC side for that planning process. So we are excited about that, and it's moving, so we're making some headway on those plans. I also wanted to let you know that we are nearing the completion of the Request for Proposal Process for the Financial Advisor position. We will be meeting early next week as a committee to make a recommendation on that. And we will have the financial advising firm on staff to help us as we start working on these variety of facilities plans. And then, just one that wasn't on my mind until today. We met with the LCCC Building Authority at lunchtime and had a good meeting. But the major piece that I want to bring to your attention is, they agreed to move forward with the process of looking at assuming the debt for the Albany County Campus, which is currently held by the foundation, and actually refinancing or refunding bonds to assume that debt and bring that property underneath the LCCC Building Authority. So we will be moving forward with that here over the next few months as well. So that's facilities planning updates. Wanted to just give a brief update on the campus reorganization as well. Three people now stole my thunder of introducing Dr. Jim Johns as the interim Vice President for Academic Affairs. Most of you know Jim, and we're tickled to have you here. Very appreciative of you being willing to step in and take on that role, without a doubt. I sent out a memo to the campus Obeck, I think at the end of May, May 20th or so, with some variety of updates on the campus reorganization. US trustees were copied on that, but I thought I would just go through and hit a couple of high points. The Vice President searches are well underway. And Trustee Moser and Trustee Merrill are on those committees. We have gotten to the point where we have whittled back great applicant pools down to semifinalists. I think there's about nine or 10 in each committee, if I remember correctly. Maybe a little more in Academic Affairs? Maybe a little less? Eight. They will be conducting video conference interviews with the semifinalists here over the next few weeks, in fact, very soon, for the Student Services one. The finalists will be announced, and will actually then be on campus for the Vice President of Student Services, July 9th through the 13th. And then, for the Vice President of Academic Affairs, through the July 30th through August 3rd. So that's gonna be a busy, busy last couple of weeks in July. But we're really excited. I'm just tickled with the candidate pool, and I know we'll have some wonderful finalists to bring on campus. And so, those processes are going well. I don't know Carol or Ed. If you have any comments you want to share with those searches.
I would just say, in terms of Vice President of Academic Affairs, that we've had good candidates, good participation. Jeff Schmittl's also on that committee and many others. And I think we've had, we've had great participation, but the people who have involvement in the process has been very good on the part of Pauli. We've been very pleased in that process.
I also think that we have had a great process going on for the VP of Student Services. And one thing that I really liked, any of us that were on the presidential search, the thing that I like about the searches are that I get to know people on this campus better. And that is really a joy to me, to see the action. We have 13 people on our committee, which, they don't always come, but it's given me that opportunity to see interaction between everybody and to see how well everybody gets along and listens to each other, and it's a real process. So, thanks. Thanks for appointing me.
Thank you guys for serving. So, very, very optimistic and looking forward to the conclusion of those processes and getting the finalists on campus.
I don't know if I'm correct in jumping in here, but, and I can't remember what we said a couple of meetings ago. I think that one of our requests, and it'll be my request, if nobody else is with me on it, is that we at least get to meet these finalists. Somehow, whatever venue you decide, I think that it's healthy for us to know who may be coming on board.
You bet.
I request that happens.
There will be long days when the finalists get here, and there are lots of opportunities for them to engage with just about everybody on campus. In fact, I think both cases, they'll actually have two open forums for the candidates, meetings with all the groups, and so I think we'll have plenty of opportunity for you to do that, certainly. So those processes are going well. A couple of things I want to point out. I do want to just take a brief moment of personal privilege to recognize Dr. Grant Wilson. Grant has been appointed as the new Dean of Science at Casper College. He has agreed to stay with us until the end of July, the first, that first week of August, to help us with the gap between the VP of Student Services search and everything. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, Grant, for all you've done for this campus, wish you the best of luck in your new position. And then, we are holding on some of the conversations about the reconfiguration or reorganization of the academic units. I believe I let you know that the consensus from the campus was, let's get the Vice Presidents done first, and then we can look at some of those things. There are some, and were some immediate needs in terms of leadership needs. One of those was in Health Sciences, where we truly had an absence of leadership, administrative leadership there. I do want to take the opportunity to thank Stan Torvik, who has agreed to come in and oversee Health Sciences for us in this interim. It was an ideal opportunity and a great idea, because it started the process of this integration that we'll be working on through the organization, because it gives the opportunity for some of our Health Sciences programs, those that you'll be hearing about at subsequent meetings that we're working on, such as the Health Information Technology Program, but the EMT Paramedic Program, and start that integration. And so, I appreciate Stan stepping up to do that. I know the folks in Health Sciences do as well, and this is a wonderful solution to get us through these Vice President searches. So that is the campus reorganization update. Before I go on to an update, just briefly, on the Wyoming Community College Commission meetings, I thought I'd pause and see if there's any questions or comments on either the facilities or the reorganization. Oh, good, we're good. This is more of a primer to hopefully engage a few of the trustees in conversation. And for the trustees that weren't able to make it, many of us spent a handful of days in Casper as part of a series of Wyoming Community College Commission meetings. On Tuesday, which was now two weeks ago, it seems like it was closer than that, we were up as presidents of the Wyoming Community Colleges, and we held a retreat. I believe this is the second or third time where we've done a presidential retreat and spent a considerable amount of time working with our IT and institutional research folks, talking about some of the changes and the needs that we anticipate with a shift in our student management system to a different database type, as well as trying to get some commonality on the way we enter our data into our student information systems. As you know, all of the campuses use DataTells Colleague to do that. But each of us implement and enter information in the database slightly different. And that's been one of the frustrations for state lawmakers and even for the commission, is that when they ask for X from all campuses, we may enter X in a variety of ways here, at Casper, at Sheridan. And so, when they actually get it, it looks inconsistent, and it's just not good data. And so, we're working on projects to help clean up those data, help create some consistency in terms of the definitions that we use of what data we enter in there, and hopefully be able to report more as a system of seven campuses for legislative purposes and things like that. Many of you were there then on Wednesday for the facilitated meeting. It was being dubbed the Peace Summit between Wyoming Community College Commission and the Community College Trustees. I want to personally thank all of you that took the time to come up there and participate in that. That meant a lot. I heard over and over and over again how impressed they were that we had probably the strongest and most objective participation there. Many of you took leadership roles in the breakout sessions and things like that. But that went a long way with the commission, the commission staff, and with many of the other campuses. other campuses. So, thank you for taking the time to go up there and to do that. I don't know how productive you felt those meetings were. I think there was some progress made, and it certainly illustrated well how colleges can work quite effectively with Community College Commission, and not just because we are here in Cheyenne, but I think we see our roles and know how we can actually work together with that. So, I don't know if any of you have anything to share or wanted to give any input. Kevin?
Yeah, I was one who attended that peace conference, as it was called, and one of the things I was hoping to bring up tonight, John isn't here, is I felt that we went up there at first sort of unprepared for what the mood of that thing was, and I did not understand why we were unprepared for that. I think our representative did not really inform us as to what was going on with that meeting. However, on Wednesday, I thought we spread out among the groups, we assumed leadership roles, and we did our very best to try to move that in a productive direction. And I think what I heard on Wednesday night, I thought it was going to be an ugly meeting, and I think it was maybe productive. But the, seems to me that the underlying issues are never going to go away, and the principal one is that of local control versus state money. And that drives an awful lot of this, as you know, money, and money is probably going to become an even bigger driver in the next couple of years, so expect more contention. But the other is that people just feel they're being asked for too much accountability. And I heard a number of arguments up there, where people said, "We are asked to provide data to HLC, and that should be all the accountability that's required," and I think that's absolutely dead wrong. HLC has no obligation to the taxpayers and the state at all, and that's really the reason that the commission has been given a role in auditing the colleges and so forth, and I think that's entirely appropriate, and I think the commission have done a very good job on that. The other thing I wanted to point out is, there are some people who seem to have a real beef with the commission, and I want to say that we've never had a beef with the commission or their staff. They've never been anything but helpful, and they've tried to move our requests forward with all possible dispatch at times, and we have been disappointed in not being, not having things funded that we thought we were entitled to and so forth, but that's not, that was not a failing of the commission at all. So, I just want to go on the record saying that we have a good relationship with the commission and like those people.
I'll second that.
Okay.
You can't second that.
Yes, we're in business.
I didn't move.
Yes, go ahead.
Kevin, when, the first thing you said, local control versus state money, would you explain that to me?
This is, this is the idea that with state money, that there should be some state control over how these monies are spent, and some accountability for how effective they were spent. And the local control people view this as stepping on into their, into their area, that local control should trump that, you know? Don't know why. You accept, you accept this money, and there's some strings attached to it at times, and I think, and I don't think they're inappropriate. I just don't find them inappropriate at all.
I can tell you, just even in my state administrative world, that that's, that is an issue with more than just community colleges.
Oh, yes. Yeah, it is.
Anyone else, any comments?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ed.
And Dr. Schaefer might want to clarify this, but it's where some of the challenges, I think, come from, are those colleges where, when it comes to in particular capital construction, there is such a significant difference in terms of what the mill levy will raise in Goshen County versus what will happen in Sweetwater. When it comes then to looking at the requirements, the rules now that we're in, the commission rules, you're looking at people who local control feel they've already paid X dollars and don't want to pay those again, so that creates some of the friction. And I think another part of the issue out there that has caused friction in the two years I've been attending these meetings is the trustees, the presidents, and the commission, commissioners have really been on pretty much the same page, but then as we go back into our local control areas, sometimes at the state level, whether it be legislators or whether it be leadership at the executive level of the state, may make some changes. In other words, kind of outside the system, if you will, that we're supposed to be playing with. And as those, those influences impact the system that we're all agreed to play by, then we get frustrated with that process.
If I could, just, this is just for the general education of the people here tonight. Five mills in Laramie County raises close to $5 million. Five mills in Campbell County will raise $25 million. And five mills in Albany County will raise about a million and a half. And so, there you, that just shows the great disparity from one county to the next, and that's part of what the fight is about.
And you're right, Dr. Kilty, the very nature that the commission has legislative directive within statute to coordinate seven very different colleges that exist in very different environments, any type of model or tool or procedure or process that's intended to coordinate seven very different things is going to have its strengths and weaknesses, and at times will favor some institutions and disfavor other institutions, and that's where the majority of the conflict, I think, resides. We'll always have that, but there is opportunity to work effectively together in the areas that we have some flex and some leeway in the interpretation of statute and the way we implement and actually work with individual campuses as they work with the commission. And I think if we keep a positive perspective on that, and keep a positive relationship and use our communication channels, I think we could actually probably be a role model in the state for how this can work without compromising your authority and control over the curriculum and over the institution, yet recognizing the significant investment that taxpayers put into it. So, you know, I found the meeting informational, educational, but also productive, and again, I cannot stress enough how much of an impression it left that we had five of our seven trustees there. So, thank you. And then, the one other piece that I want to, yes, sir?
Let me say my piece. I was just waiting for everybody else to talk, and I'm going to be pretty short, and I'm really going to kind of hop off what you just said. I want to thank the trustees for coming, and I know that the couple that didn't make it had some, you were out of town and stuff like that. It was pretty enlightening, let's put it that way, especially when that guy from Rock Springs was beating on me a variety of times, but that's okay. Jim Roth.
Yes.
But I do, I want to thank the employees, and I have seen Dr. Rose, I don't really run into him on a professional basis, but seen him a couple of times since that meeting. And he said that he appreciated our leadership, and I said, "You're going to continue to get that leadership from Laramie County Community College." So, again, I appreciate the efforts, and it is an opportunity for us, and I think that we can be a role model of how you can work with the state agency, and that's just, just what we got. So, again, I appreciate it, and go ahead, Joe.
Thank you. My apologies, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No problem.
Then, the other piece, the, on Thursday, the last meeting that week, which I was not present at, is the commission meeting itself. Trustee Moja represented us, and Lisa Murphy was also up there. Thank you, Lisa, for doing that, but I thought I would just give them a few minutes to highlight some of the conversations at the commission meeting. I know there were a few things that were discussed that are of importance, and I'm looking for some clarification on a few of them.
Okay, and Lisa, I look forward to you commenting on some of these. One of the issues that of course came up was, they were going to work on the strategic plan, they wanted to update the statewide strategic plan, that did not get accomplished because of many of the things that we were involved with, the commission was involved with. So, they have rescheduled that, and I believe, I don't know if you found that for certain, but I believe that's in Douglas now, and it will occur in August.
August, yeah, I do.
And that will be something that, you know, anybody, if they wanted to kind of see how that works out, and how those strategic elements are being viewed and reassessed, and will be, so to speak, realigned a little bit, I think you would find that meeting interesting in August. It is, of course, a public meeting, so that would be open to anyone. And the issue that came up there, and Schmittl talked about that, I think, I don't know. No, he's still there. Okay, I'm used to sitting over here. Don't do that. One of the things that continues to be an issue that I think is going to, or at least I hope will be taken care of in the near future, is concurrent dual enrollment, and I know the Faculty Alliance has agreed to and is in the process of providing some information on how that's done at the various colleges, making it some standards, and I think the VPs have been instructed, have been working on that. So, that area is also being researched for the commission by a couple of consultants, really Job, I think, is it Job or Jopp? How does she say her name, Bill? Lilim Jopp?
Job.
Job, okay, right, the first time, definitely changed that. And Sue Risky, I believe, those are the two consultants that are putting together a report on concurrent enrollment. So, I think we all would find that information really helpful when in fact we do get a chance to see that, and of course, the Faculty Alliance throughout the state and what they will provide with that. There will be, and this is the part where I would ask your assistance, Lisa, we both were a little bit in consternation, but I believe I understand that there'll be no Capcom projects introduced this summer, but those, or this coming fall, but those which are already in the pipeline are in place and would not be impacted by the decision not to enter additional projects. So, with that, I'm going to let you add some things that we also have to look at.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave over. Thank you, Ed, and thank you for taking me under your wing a little bit. They had some very good arrangements made because of your peace summit. One of the things that you all discussed was to have a new setup in the room, so they have rearranged it so that the presidents sit with the commission now. So, Trustee Moja invited me to sit up with him, which was very nice. He took me under his wing and sort of showed me the ropes, so thank you for that, and thank you for explaining to me what was going on in many of the cases, so I appreciated that very much. We were a little bit confused on the Capcom discussion, and there was some debate over it because of one of the discussions that was going on with Eastern Wyoming College, and we came to the conclusion, and I think we were in agreement, that because of the projects that we already have in the pipeline, we think that we are okay with our building forward plan. So, we have already requested those, we have our Level One funding already requested, so we believe that we are in good shape. We would like some confirmation on that, though, so we may want to get with Jim Rose just to confirm that, but that was our understanding at the end of a very long discussion and debate. It was a little bit confusing.
Yes.
And they did have a very, I think it was more effective after your peace summit. I really do think that you did some good work on Wednesday, and that people were very complimentary about the LCCC trustees. I heard that in very differing circles, so congratulations to all of you for your work. I also wanted to thank Jane Myrick. There was a salary study requested, and Jane jumped right in and helped us with that, and I know she sat in on a conference call, and she's going to be helping us. There's a rather large request being presented to the community colleges by the Joint Appropriations Committee, and Jane and Carol are helping us with that, so with that, Ed, is there anything that we've missed?
I would just add on that request, this is one of the things that I mentioned earlier tonight when we were looking about some stuff in terms of the metrics for measuring things. I think oftentimes, we, as people involved in trying to assess what's going on at different institutions, whether it be commissions, colleges, or whatever, sometimes I get a little frustrated, I think the Joint Appropriations Committee really kind of laid that on the group at the last minute and asking for it over a short timeframe, is a bit unfortunate, you know, and I would hope that we as a board keep that in mind, too, when we ask for certain kinds of things, that realize the impact that it has on the folks that have to put those together, because my understanding, and hopefully now, I don't know if Jane's, I'm curious as to whether they've got a template put together for it, and, you know, pulling 10 years' worth of data together is not an easy task, so appreciate what you do there.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the president's report.
Okay, I'll open it up for any public comment, if anybody's got anything to say, ask questions, et cetera. If not, we'll move forward on to board reports. First report would be the Finance and Facilities Committee, and Ed or Dr. Kilty?
Ed, I'll just go ahead and start, and you can add anything you wish. We did not have our monthly meeting. Carol was out of town at the time. Ed and I have been beating some dead horses that I don't think are going to go anywhere until the entire board gets involved in it, and so we just canceled the meeting on the assumption that nothing in the, in the fund budget reports or the balance sheets had changed materially, and we were assured that they would not, that they had not. However, though I don't have much to say about budget right now, I would ask your indulgence when we get down to the second reading, because I do have something that may turn out to be not brief, as, you know, Ed, Bill always likes to say, "I'll just be brief here," but I won't be brief. I'm going to warn you about that in advance, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Anything, Ed, anything else?
No.
Okay, College Communications and Relations?
I have no report, Bill.
Okay, good. And then, our Governance Committee?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything to report either, but we still need to get together to work on our initial, you know, those initial policies that we need to put together?
Yes.
I have just some very rough pieces of paper put together, and that's all we've accomplished, so Joe and I saw each other running this morning and said, "Let's work on that this month," so, or this next coming month, so we're going to do that.
Okay. Okay, and I know we've got some important things there, so, you know, I am quite anxious to see what we get put together on that, so we can continue to move forward, so, thank you. Any public comment on our board reports? Okay. Item number five, which is our fiscal year 2013 budget, second reading. Let me get a little educated here. This binder is, what, Carol?
That's the proposed budget.
Okay, has it changed from the last time that we got it? Okay, so it's the same?
It has not changed on the last time.
And I believe at least the last time we got it was at our May meeting?
May meeting, right.
The May meeting, okay. You're at the podium, so I imagine you want to tell us something.
Well, I don't have any additional comments beyond what, what we have already given to you. I think we'll just take comments and questions and board direction. The next time you see the budget will be your opportunity to vote, so if you have direction for us as a board, then we'll need that now.
Okay. Okay, trustees, I open up the floor to discussion from the trustees. Kevin, you can go first.
Yeah, there are a few items I would like to talk about.
Sure.
And really, it comes under two headings, and once again, I'm going to make my complaint about the, about some of the positions in the budget, the AD position. I've sat down and I put together sort of an advantages and disadvantages, and the advantages are the arguments for it, and I'm sure, well, I heard these arguments last week, and I'm sorry, I wasn't impressed yet. So, better civic engagement, is there any data to show that we'll actually get better civic engagement if we hire an AD? That's just a rhetorical question at this point. Improved student success seemed to be an argument that was made, and I, I once again challenge you, is there any data to show that? I mean, you pointed to the fact that the student athletes have a higher GPA than the rest of the campus. I will point out in return that they don't take the same classes, and they may not be evaluated in the same way. I don't think they're comparable. And so, any argument there that hiring an AD would help the general student population, I think, is nonexistent, not just we, nonexistent. Better facility usage and intramurals, we did that without an AD before, so I just don't find those very, very forceful arguments. And then, really, the argument that I really did not want to hear was the one that $100,000 doesn't matter much in a $60 million budget. Well, trustees, if $100,000 doesn't matter, then there's nothing in our budget that matters. Our entire budget is built of things that are $100,000 here and there. So, I think everything matters in the budget, and Benjamin Franklin said, "Beware small expenditures, small leaks sink great ships." So, I think we should look at it all. Now, the disadvantages, I'll just point out that this doesn't fit anywhere really in our strategic plan unless you make the, unless you make the stretch that this is somehow going to engage the, the community better, or something like that. Wasn't mentioned as a need in our organizational audit. And the other thing that bothers me, and this is the positions in HR bother me in this re- this regard also, is that I think we're gonna be looking at some near-term budget stress, and I don't see how we'll escape it, not in the near term, anyway. And this just hires some fairly expensive positions that maybe would be better left. The HR positions, I'm gonna suggest, should really be maybe temporary positions until HR gets on their feet, and then we'll see if they're really needed as full-time positions. But in the case of the AD, you just made an argument a while ago for putting off reorganization of the academic units until the VP of Instruction is here. Why not put this decision off until the VP of Student Services and, let's see, who's the other VP that really is sort of involved in this, a VP of Finance can get together and work this out? So, or make some recommendations. So, that's all I have to say about that AD position. I don't like it, I'm not crazy about the way the positions in HR are structured at this point, but let me talk just about the budget process in general. Here's our budget, and I know it's a pretty thick document, but all the amounts in this thing are really aggregated, and I don't know how many people have ever looked at that document, but if a constituent in this town came to me and said, "You voted for the budget, are we spending our money wisely at LTRC?" I'd have to tell them, "I don't know," because these are aggregated amounts. Now, there are people who think the board should govern from 30,000-foot altitude. Well, this is a view from the moon. There aren't any discernible features in this. So, behind that document is one that practically nobody on the board, except Ed or I, have probably even looked at at this point. And this isn't even begin to show you the length of this document, I just printed out a few of the budget line items for a few of the groups on the campus. That'll probably run to some 76 pages or something, but it is the document that tells you how you arrive at the sums in the aggregated budget amounts in the document that we're voting on. That doesn't even tell you how they arrive at those numbers, though. That is done by some mysterious process that Ed and I still can't quite fathom, even after asking questions and questions and questions. So, I'll give you some examples of this, and lately, we've had dinner with some campus groups. One of those campus groups was some students. I have sort of wondered when we were gonna get around to talking about the things that the students discussed with us on those nights. So, students specifically asked me about some things that pertain to the budget, so this is gonna dovetail with what we're talking about right now. In April, I asked if we were gonna have some time to specifically talk about some specifics in this budget and get answers, and I was assured at the time that we would, and here it is, second reading, we've not had that discussion as a board at all, and I don't think there's gonna be any time for it. We're gonna get to the point where we're voting next time, and that's it. So, let me give you where the student complaints fit in with my complaints about the budget. One afternoon, when faculty were, I guess, off-campus or something like that, there were a ton of students down in the library studying at various tables, and they were using anatomical models in there. They were A&amp;P students, students who either are nurses or hope to be nurses, and there were a ton of them. They filled the library, and they were noisy, and some of the tables, they weren't doing anything, they were talking and socializing at the time, and I thought it was pretty interesting that the library was so full that day. Well, the young ladies who had dinner with me that night over here were all a bunch of hopeful nurses, they were A&amp;P students, and they told me specifically about that day without me prompting them at all, and they said they were in there using the anatomical models to study, and there were insufficient models, and I don't know if some of them are now defective or not, they do wear out and so forth, but that's the reason there were tables that were just chit-chatting, they were waiting on other models and so forth. I thought that was interesting, so I investigated a little further, and it turns out that the library had made a budget request for more anatomical models that was turned down. So, somehow, in our budget process, an expenditure that would've benefited quite a large number of students immediately was turned down, and yet, you've heard about me complain about some supplies budgets that seem unbelievably large to me, and there's no explanation for them at all. This is what comes out of this budget process, and I think we on the board need to sit down in the next two months, and this is, this is why this discussion of evaluation of the campus kinda comes at an inconvenient time, because I think we also need some time to talk about budget process prior to the next budget cycle getting started, or we'll always be in this particular position. We're always gonna be behind the game and looking at a budget that people expect us to pass in short term without having looked at it very carefully. So, I just, I don't wanna see another budget come about as this process, and I have some ideas about things that I think would help. They would make the campus a little more entrepreneurial, which I think it isn't now. It probably would provide some mechanisms for actually moving money from one use to another, and I think that would do nothing but benefit the college and the community if we could get those mechanisms. But I tell you what, one of the things I think would help most, I have been told for years that there are budget documents down in the library people can go look at if they want to. Well, that's the budget document, it's the view from the moon. You need a telescope, and the telescope will bring you to this view here. There's the document that ought to be down in the library for people to look at. It tells you what individual chart of account numbers have for budget and expenditures, and it goes back with a couple of years of history, and it has projections into the future, and I think if everybody had access to that sort of information, everybody would know what everyone else is planning to spend. And if people had questions about, "Golly, that sounds like a lot of money, why couldn't I get that?" and so forth, maybe it will lead to some pressure to change the budget process. There, I've had my, I've had my say, but I think the board needs to have a discussion on this, and we haven't had one to this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your indulgence.
Okay. Joe, do you want me, would you like to say anything, or?
I'm happy to hear your conversation. I'm hearing the board needs to have conversations, I don't wanna compromise the timeline.
I'm gonna start the conversation, because I think that, I think. I'm gonna come at it, and I'm gonna say a couple things. This is not a 30, this is not a from the moon view, and I think that is something that we need to address in our governing model as to how detailed we do get into these things, because here's my philosophy. My philosophy is, is if we hire good leaders, make sure that they're competent, we do have to give them some, and believe and trust that they are going to put together resources in a manner that is gonna make this college work. It is the conversation that we had prior to our meeting. It is to have that type of measurement, and so on. I've been involved in, the poor little guy putting together the budgets, also been involved in larger organizations, and I tell you what, you start losing sight of the forest because of the trees when you start diving into this, and I really think that, at least from my perspective, my approach is, if you're ever really, really gonna fix it, you're gonna have to get the right leadership in, and you're gonna have to trust that leadership to a certain level. And I don't think that we can micromanage the budgeting process. Now, I am a proponent of feeling and knowing that we do have a sound budget process, and Kevin, we had this discussion because we did meet with the auditor for a kickoff meeting, what was that, three weeks ago? Which was a good thing, which was the first time that that had ever been done, and we need to make sure that happens every time, and so does the auditor, so. Needs to meet with some board representatives independently. And I will throw this out, and I don't know why you didn't say it, but I'll say it, is I am not opposed at a point in time of having some type of public meeting in regards to the budget. And maybe you can flesh it in a little bit more, because I haven't thought about it too much, but it would give the opportunity for folks to find out, and it really does, I think we have to be open book, and, you know, if somebody's mad about what somebody else is getting, you know what, go ahead and display that. And, in the end, it is our responsibility to make those judgments, and that is something that we did talk about as part of this process, that we would have, kinda hold some type of, I mean, dug on it, if we can find the time to have employee hearings on terminated employees, we can find the time to do something like this. So, that is really my feeling on it. So, really, I'll just kinda cap my thought process. It's gonna be leadership, hiring the right people, trusting those people, it's gonna have measurement from our side, and I just don't wanna get into micromanaging, but I do want it to be a transparent process. And I don't know how much more transparent that you can get it to do that, and I guess that's where I would look to the business office and so on to provide some of those things. I don't wanna throw wrenches in the deal, but I don't see where that is gonna hurt anybody, and it might enlighten somebody, so, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, you had, you had mentioned something about public budget hearings. I'm not talking about board necessarily being closely involved in this at all. What I, what you and I talked about, when I suggested something of the effect, that it would be what we do in businesses quite often, we're down at the very low level, some operation at the very low level says, "Here's how much money we need to operate next year," and we will go make a pitch at some meeting that anyone can attend for how much money we're proposing to spend and why. And, you know, golly, if farmers can do that with bankers, faculty members can do that for their individual departments, that shouldn't be an unreasonable burden, and everyone else can go in there and say, "You know what, Anthropology is asking for this much money, and they're asking for some money for a new faculty person, and here's why they're arguing that they need a new faculty person," and so forth. I think that would be very different from the current process, and it wouldn't necessarily have an enormous, I mean, the board wouldn't necessarily be involved in it all, but it would be much more transparent, I think. I'll just, I'll just be really honest with you, I've talked to a number of people who are on the Budget Advisory Committee, and I'm sure there are people on the Budget Advisory Committee who think the budget process was just dandy, but there are a large number of people in that who think it was not just dandy, they said there wasn't really anything for them to do, there was no discussion, they didn't see any data, they were there to talk about process, but some of them said, "Well, we couldn't really see any process." And I'll just, I'll just share with you one really damning comment. One person said to another on that committee, "Oh, it's a great committee to be on because it looks like it's pretty important, but you don't do anything." Now, that's not a, that's not a great endorsement of a process. So, I'm not advocating the budget be micromanaged by the board at all. I'm interested in a process that would tell the board that when someone says they're gonna spend this amount of money, this is why, and this is how it will add value to the institution. That's what I wanna know. So, there.
Good. Ed?
I tend to agree with, as you might suspect, a good old Kevin has had to say, but let me come at it a little different in terms of the AD. I'm not opposed necessarily to the idea of an AD. I, too, would like some information, but more importantly, to me, that's a, that's board level when you begin to think about the implications of athletic programs, and athletic programming as it affects our budget, the college, education, the opportunities for students. And I really think we need to have a discussion about that, and I think the idea that Kevin pointed out of holding that in advance until we get a VP of Student Services, I think is an excellent idea. That leaves it open to, okay, if we're going to go down that path, let that student services bring forth the analysis of this and share with us what that's going to do. In addition, and I've spoken to that before in the HR area, and I think we're, I think some of us are in agreement on that, that we're not 100% certain what we need in terms of help there. We know that the CBT suggested we needed significant assistance there, especially if the HR or the HIRA system putting that in, but, you know, I think it's really a good idea, and I noticed some of the things in the budget are set that way, but I think we oughta, again, look at that being consulting effort there, and then, as that's moving forward and accomplished, then we can decide what is it we need, though, again, not us the board necessarily deciding that, I think that's back to the president and his staff deciding what they need there. But I'd like to see us hold, and again, I'm holding on those for a reason that Kevin brought up and that I think we're all well aware of. I'm not exactly certain how the state's gonna come about in terms of finances, and I think we need to take a very close look at how that would impact us. Those aren't a lot of money in those positions, but every little bit's gonna impact us if, in fact, we have to make some of those cuts. And I know we've got the president and the staff that made a good plan in terms of how we're gonna handle those cuts, but we don't know how that's all gonna work out. So, those are the areas that I'm concerned about, that bothers me with the budget, and of course, the process. I love the idea of having more of the transparency of it, I think that will help us. One of the things in the athletic area that would, and it's not unique athletics, I'm picking on them at the moment, but it's not directed just at them, that's a major program, and that takes significant funding. When we look at, and they draw source of funding from two areas, unless I'm wrong, Carol, they're getting funding from agency in terms of fees.
Athletics?
Yes.
Yes.
They also get funding out of the operating, right? I don't know, even when I look through the more detailed budget, I don't know what athletics is costing us. And, I don't really care that much, I mean, I care about the cost of it, but I'd like to know what it's doing for us. Then, we can say, "Well, that cost is well worthwhile," but I'm not sure of that, I just don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Joe?
Well, I'd just like to say that the first two years I was on this board, we were handed a budget and said, "Here it is, vote on it, that's given," but Brenda, you remember that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, that's how it was. And, it just seems to me that Vice President Hoagland has done a superior job in explaining a lot of this to us and to me, so that I have a much better understanding of the whole process, and I, I don't feel, Kevin, like you do, that I've been left out of the process. I feel like I've been very much included. Now, that said, we all have, you know, the money is not, and the organization of it is not my forte by any means, but I really feel like I understand the budget far better than I did for the first two years. The other comment about the athletic director, I, of course, I think that Joe explained it pretty well, but I'll tell you, after going to about a dozen lunches this spring with kids, it was something that came up every time we had lunch. And to me, the kids are what's important around here, and that's something they want. And so, I'm, those are my only two comments.
Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Kevin.
Just as a point of clarification, the students you met with didn't say, "We want an athletic director," they said, "We want intramurals and other activities," yes?
Well, but that was what, they wanted somebody that would be down there and da-da-da-da-da-da-da, I mean, it was implied.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard Ed ask a question, I thought it was a question of Carol, and that was, "Are we getting value from athletics?" And, are you expecting an answer from Carol?
No.
Oh!
Trustee. It was a.
Retaliate.
Yes, it was more of, you know, these are concerns I have in terms of, okay, again, we're voting on a lump sum issue here, it'd be nice if, if there are areas that logically we have some questions about, it would be nice if we could dig that out. And that, maybe I should've asked for that a lot sooner, I didn't, you know, as I dug into the budget, better understood of realizing there's multiple sources for funding there. It's something that I'm sure they can provide us with, but more importantly than just the cost, that's a factor that's very important. But I wanna try to understand how that affects our fiscal education program, which is the academic side. You know, trying to balance those two, I think is very important. And I, I think that planning has been done on the budget. You know, we don't know, and I don't know as I wanna know all of it, but I'd really like to see a little, not a little, but more transparency as it's been indicated.
Okay, well, I just, and one other thing.
Sure.
Student fees. When do we talk about student fees? Joe?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Merrill, that is a good question. Right now, you as trustees, if I understand this correctly, do not talk about the student fees, at least not the course fees and program-associated free fees. Mandatory fees, maybe, but for the most part, those are handled administratively. Am I correct in that?
Correct, and then there's another, the students also assess themselves fees, which you don't see as well, and that, the student fees that fund the athletics that Ed was talking about are those fees, the fees that the students have assessed themselves.
But to your point, my understanding is you do not, my interest, and I can tell you where we'll be going, that in the future, you will be having conversations, and if things work out, I almost hate to say this, but it on the record, but approving fees so that we have an understanding of how those are approved, their uses, so we can track those. can track those better, and we can answer questions. Trustee Mojer and I had a conversation yesterday, and there was things about fees, and if we had a truly comprehensive matrix of fee that was established and approved and in board record, we'd go back to the board record to actually find that. And so, the fees are something that is critical to, to access and affordability. They are necessary for many things, but, but you have not necessarily had those conversations. My intention is that we will in the future.
And, and thank you very much for that. And I know that we talked about this when we were up in Casper at that conference, and that is that we have the highest student fees in the state, and, and we need, I think someone needs to be addressing that, because one of the other colleges was quite proud that we had the highest student fees, and, and I said, we, we have to fix that somehow. Our, our Joe has to figure that out.
It is, it is on my big things list, but certainly an area that we'll be working on.
I'm going to ask a big rhetorical question. What's wrong with having the highest fees? That's not really the question. The question is, is how do we use those fees? And I, and I guess, you know, we get off onto this, you know, I, I have a saying, I was in Chicago for 13 years, and I came back, and I would keep talking to these guys, and they go, I'm a fiscal conservative. I figured out pretty quickly that they were people that would not take a minimal risk and get any gain. And I think that you do have to keep that in mind. I mean, you do have to provide resources to, to get better. And I guess that the point to me is, is yes, we do need to know what those fees are, and are they, and are they being used in the manner that we think they ought to be? Because I know those guys are so proud of that, and I, and you know, it's, you know, when, it's, yeah, enough said on that one, so.
And part of that.
That's not against you, it's just, it's just when we, that, that is a, is a, just an emotional spouting of our fees, our fees, our fees, our fees. And I, and I think that we, we have to, you know, back off and go, what do we get for the fees? And again, it's, it's the big picture of some kind of accountability in the system. And you know what? We haven't had it. We haven't, and I admit it. And I, and again, it's, it's a complex thing, but I think that we're moving in the right direction, you know, and I think Joe knows, we need good leadership in here across the board. We need people that know what they're doing. We need to have some expectations and accountability and so on, so.
Well, and part of that question was to do with intermurals and the stash of money that we have being held for our students in that intermural program, which is, to me, considerable.
Kevin, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to, to follow up on something that Bill said. I don't want to imply that, that Carol, you haven't been cooperative and so forth. I think you've done a great job of explaining budgetary process to me. It's just that I'm a pretty hard skeptic to convince of much of anything, and it may very well be that when we have our board discussion about the budget, there'll be a majority of, of the board to say, hey, we're fine with the current process. That will shut me up. I'll be happy with that. But we've got to have the darned discussion. And I've been promised it, and, gosh, you guys just break promises all the time. It's breaking my heart.
Oh, gosh.
Yes, sir.
Just like my seven-year-old. Never do what you say you're going to do.
Oh, no. Better look for that one.
This, this may be out of context, but I, I think it should be. We're going to have a discussion of this, and I was just wondering, this does not show up in the budget, so will the budget be realigned to address this?
Mr. Chairman, trustee Mojer, what he's referencing is this, is the conversation we'll be having about the foundation. It does show up in the budget. In fact, the, the element relating to the, the increase of fees, part of, part of the confusion is, is the way that, that we are doing. We have had sort of this intermingling of budgeting with the foundation in the past. What we'll be doing now is really treating this as a contractual relationship, where we give them compensation for services, that they'll provide those services or fundraising services and to do that. And within that budget, it essentially did eliminate the L triple C foundation budget items, but then took that money and actually increased our investment in there under the, the proposed uses.
First page after the appendix.
After the appendix.
Actually, that's the page after the appendix.
So, if you look at page 34, under continuation of service foundation contract services.
Yes.
So, it's a slight change, but that is an increase of, of a hundred and some thousand dollars. I don't know the exact number off of it, but I want to say about $150,000. So, that, that does show an increase in the, what we, the compensation we provide to the foundation for the services that it renders, which is inherent in that. But in terms of the staffing model outside of that, there.
It doesn't show that.
Correct. There, there isn't any change. It's, we're, we're paying them that lump sum. They've developed a budget, they manage a budget. The one piece of intermingling is this, is the proposal of the, the integration of the executive staff here.
Okay. Okay, so we'll get to that. Okay, any other comments on the budget? Okay, any comments from the public on the budget? Okay? If there are none, oh, Joe, go ahead.
Just, just a, a couple of, of real quick points. I don't want to flatter Mr. Chairman, but I do want to go on the record that, that I agree with portions of what Dr. Kilty is saying, and, and it is truly my interest to improve the budget process. The college council's role in that, the reorganization, new leadership, all of those things are, are necessary steps to get us to the point where we can talk about improved processes and, and to do that. And I have no, no ill will or put any blame on people here before I came, or, you know, even after I came, but I, I did step into a process that had already gone through considerable time and months in, in generating ideas, requests, proposals, developing those budgets, and to step in and unwind that would simply take us too long. And so, I understand your frustration, Kevin, and I, I do understand that. I wish I could unwind what happened before I got here. What I can tell you is you have my commitment that we are going to work on that process, make it more objective, make it more transparent. And I would, would encourage you all as trustees to, to listen to Kevin's request, and maybe set some time apart in August. One of the things that I can honestly say, outside of the College Brain Trust organizational assessment and some informal conversation, there isn't really a whole lot of guidance on what we should be focusing the development of our budget on, to be honest with you. We have, I've had a lot of individual ideas and thoughts and things like that, but if I were to try to say, what are the priorities of the board in terms of the allocation of our resources, I had to stretch in some cases to, to help put together and construct that budget, and that's not where we want to be. So, some significant time spent in August, I won't call it strategic planning, I won't get there, but just having the conversation about where the priorities are and where the things that we want to focus on as a board, we should spend that time. If, if you want to en, engage in a comprehensive conversation about how we utilize extracurricular activities on this campus to advance our mission, I think that's a great conversation. I'd encourage you not just to pick athletics out, but look at all of our extracurricular activities, student groups, performing groups, all of those things that we do, and let's have a conver, that's a great conversation for you to have. And that conversation would provide me some insight in what I should be looking at and doing. My general belief is if we're going to do something and commit to it, let's do it right. I have a, a large concern about doing it through fractional or part-time staff, especially when, when we've done the analysis, and I think these are the things that can be remedied that will help our students and our institution. But I think we should have that conversation. I would love to have that conversation, to know what is the role and your interest in extracurricular activities on the college, and to do that. So, I would encourage you, and I'm happy to facilitate and try to work with you to set up a time, but let's have a conversation. We'll start the budgeting process for FY14 probably in September, starting with some of the personnel conversations. So, having a conversation in August about the budget for the next year will not be too premature, and it may give me some, some insight in how we should develop or improve this process. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop there, but.
Okay. You played your card. I'm going to play mine. We do need to have that meeting. We're just going to have to make the time for it, because we have had that conversation in, in kind of big picture. We got down a little bit, and, and I, I think we need to do that as a board. What did we commit ourselves to in August already?
Fifteen. Fifteenth of October.
Yeah. It, it may not be bad, and, and we knew we were coming down this road, and I think that Joe and I, Joe, you and I talked, talked about it, you know, you know, we've traditionally had this kind of day-long, what, what was the name?
Retreat.
The retreat and that type of thing, you know? Guess what I got to say? That's old-fashioned. I think what we need to do is, is, is focus in on some strategic things that we know that we need to get addressed and have four, four of those, and maybe they're a little bit shorter and so on, but it is a focused conversation. And what I'm hearing from you, doctor, is we need to have one of those towards the end of August. And so, I'm looking for times when people may want to do that. Our meeting is what, on the 15th?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to throw it up. Kevin, I, I want the conversation. I think you want it. I think everybody does.
Let's see what we can accomplish on the 15th.
Well, the 15th, we just committed ourselves to, to the measurement side.
Yeah, but that won't necessarily take the entire time, maybe, possibly.
It could. What I might suggest, and we can work on some coordinating some of this offline, Mr. Chairman, but I didn't get the sense that all of you had an interest in sitting down and digging through those performance measures, some of you. But if you all do, you know, correct me now, but I would be happy to pull that group together in July and basically invite, have the trustees that can make it and come and dig into that, and let's spend some time in July. There's no reason we have to wait. We don't have to do it as part of a board meeting. If there's more than three, we'll notice it and do all the good stuff so that the public knows. But, you know, I'm happy to do that, and then that frees up your time in August to work on some of the budget stuff and have a conversation about these things.
Well, I agree with you, because all I'm waiting for is tell me what the measurements are, and I'll make my decision if they're important or not. I don't need to get in your way, quite frankly. That's my approach. We can just shift this budget, not budget, but this priorities conversation to the 15th meeting. Am I hearing that?
Yeah.
It'd be a good deal.
So, Greg, would you say that, so the key indicator stuff, we're going to meet about in July, right?
I, I'm going to say that Dr. Schaefer can coordinate, and if you're interested in to digging down into those things, you can do it. Like I said, my interest is bring them back to me, and I'll make some judgments. I don't want to spend a lot of time at it. I know they're important, but I know a lot of other people spend a lot of time. We don't, we don't need 15 guys on the football field.
And then we would talk about the budget on the 15th?
We'd be penalized.
Is that correct?
And then, and it's not even the budget. It's, I guess, yeah, it would be our priorities.
Right, what we've been talking about.
And, and get into a couple of different conversations, because one I know we're going to have is, is, I don't know how we termed it, but is our, it is the community side. And that's where athletics, part of athletics comes in and so on.
I, that, I think that's good. We're, the, the governance stuff that I need to, we're doing that in September.
Yes.
So, that, that works out good.
That's fine. Well, we, we can put together an agenda and, you know, and give Joe some priorities, and he's going to look for some big picture stuff, you know, where, where do we focus efforts, based on, on what's been going on and what we think's going on, so. Okay, so we just shifted the agenda, and if folks do want to dig down, and, and Joe is willing to do that, that'd be great, so. Okay. All right. We got several other interesting topics to go through, so. Again, I'm going to open up. Any public comment on our budget? Second reading. Okay. Number six, now we will come down to approval items, the one mil levy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I want to point out that a while ago, I said that I would entertain, that I would make such a motion, and now I shall. And I said, in the way, in the way I've used English, I was okay before, but Bill was wrong to follow me.
Okay.
You're just such a fine leader. What can I say? I second that.
Okay, so I'm looking for my motion here that I lost.
Right on your agenda.
Oh, it is.
Staff recommendation.
Yes. Oh, I know, I glossed it. I had all that stuff here, let's see. I'll bring it over there. I just want to have it in front of me. Well, doggone it, I hate this one. Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, so we've got a motion on the board that the Board of Trustees approves a continuation of the one mil levy authorized by Wyoming statute. You've got that already for an additional two-year period beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013. We've got, or 2014. We've got a motion on the board, discussion, discussion, any other discussion? Okay, no discussion, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. Next topic, L triple C and L triple C Foundation operating agreement. Let me, I, I'm going to preface, Joe, who's going to get up and explain it to us, I will apologize slightly that it is coming at us fairly quickly. And, and I told Joe this, that if people feel uncomfortable at all, two weeks doesn't matter. But one of the things that we are going to want to do is talk about this and flesh this out as much as we can. So, Joe, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Boy, I don't want to go into too much history, but just as a backdrop, and because you know some of the history of the foundation more so than I do, when, when I, in fact, before I came on board in December, the, the foundation was recruiting for an executive director, and that has been the traditional model of the foundation, is to have an executive director and a pretty skeleton crew, but effective staff to do the foundation's activities. They went through a recruitment process, made a, a non-traditional offer in a hire in the executive director just before I got here, taking an individual out of, out of secondary education that had some interest background and great connections, and, and really took a chance on a non-traditional approach to filling that position. That unfortunately didn't work out, and it really drove home some of the, the major issues that, that we've had with the, the foundation. Some of those issues include the fact that with the maturity of the foundation and where it's at and the resources that are available, it is nearly impossible to recruit nationally or even locally for an executive leadership for that and still put together a staff that's critical to actually conduct the operations of the foundation. More so, the, the needs and the growing complexity of the foundation's operations have not been met because of such a lean staff, made up of quite a few part-time folks to try to fill in and step in those types of things. So, we've had an impossible model in many regards, based on where we're at. And complicate that more, the, the integrated arrangement in which we carried a portion of the budget on our budget and their on their budget, and, and the proportionate reimbursement of staff and all that good stuff, really, really took us to the point where we had to pause and say, let's talk about a different model and how we can, can do this. And let's talk about a model that will ensure it has strong executive oversight and leadership with incredibly strong coordination and connection to the campus, so that, that your priorities and our direction as a campus for fundraising are enmeshed with the foundation's priorities and direction for fundraising activities to do that. There are, were clear gaps in, in the staffing resources that we need. We've had a lot of conversation about an aggressive facilities plan and, and ensuing capital campaign, and we've lacked the resources to put somebody in that area that can actually do corporate giving and, and elements of a, a capital campaign. And so, over time, and, and as we discussed not too many months ago, we, we've developed this, this slightly new model, and I can tell you, this model isn't foreign in higher education. You'll find an integrated advancement model in, in many, many community colleges. I believe you've had previous presidents and staff that have talked about it in concept. I don't know where they, they ended. What we've tried to do here is bring forth a model that would essentially solve the vast majority of the foundation's struggles, would position it well to really be in tune with the institution, especially as we go forward in an aggressive capital campaign, leverage the resources that we have available, clarify relations, relationships, and really set us on the right page in terms of, of the, the new direction for the foundation. There's incredible opportunity for this campus. It is going to require strong commitment and leveraging of our community supporters, which means we need to have a strong and well-positioned foundation to do that. And that's essentially what has brought us to this point. You all should have a copy, an updated copy of the proposed foundation structure, if you will, and, and what we are doing. As many of you know, what we are proposing here is the, the establishment essentially of an institutional advancement division at the college. And what that would do would bring the foundation in with many of our traditional outreach or, or public type of activities. It would bring in public and government relations, marketing, and, and those things, and connect these groups under an executive leader that would have a dual reporting line essentially between the foundation as its executive director and me as an associate vice president. It connects the, the, the people that we need in with your increased investment pending It connects the, the, the people that we need and with your increased investment pending this operating agreement and the budget, provides the resources to the foundation to add and put in corporate, corporate and, and capital campaigns, resources there, as well as providing resources to actually implement and launch some of these aggressive fundraising strategies. This operating agreement, then, is essentially the, the legal document that formally establishes the relationship between the community college, US trustees, and the foundation with their foundation board, and outlines the relationship as such. A lot of the language in here comes directly out of the existing operating agreement, in fact, quite a bit of it does. What we've done is taken time within LCCC's roles and responsibilities and the foundation's roles and responsibilities to further delineate and clarify that this is a, a service-type relationship in which we are willing to provide resources, both financial and in-kind resources, as well as information, a connection with them, to the foundation, in exchange for them testing and committing to the viability of, of our priorities, and then leveraging their collective resources to go out and raise those funds to do that. In exchange for that, we give them those resources, they provide the services back in terms of fundraising, and we work together to, to advance the, the ultimate goals and the, the success of the institution. The one area where this is muddy and probably always will be muddy, it is in all these configurations, is when you have two entities that are connected by one staff person, in this case, the associate vice president. Who supervises what? Who evaluates what? How does it work? How are we doing that? Some of that will have to work out, and there are mechanisms to do that, but that is one of the challenges. What I can tell you is, right now, you have that integration and sort of that enmeshment with all of those staff. So we've isolated it in this essentially to one executive level position that, that essentially will work closely with the president, with US trustees, and with the foundation board. And so this, in my opinion, is a much more workable condition. And so I will stop there. I know we've had some conversation on that. You have two trustees, three actually, one, John's not here, who serve on the foundation board. They've heard the conversation. This conversation has gone through president's cabinet, through college council, the new college council, through the foundation board, the foundation executive committee, and has not changed from our conversation a, a month or two ago significantly. And in general, people say, this is a good solution. Not only is it probably the best solution for the situation, it's actually a good solution overall. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I know you have questions, and I would rather hear your questions and answer those than keep rattling on.
Okay. Bill, can I indulge, just to get, make sure I understand what we have, what we have here? On the foundation side, there's gonna be executive director, director position eliminated, correct?
Correct.
And it looks like a new position called director of corporate giving.
Correct.
Okay, so effectively, if the question, you know, we just, maybe, I have to feel comfortable on my own mind, they're not really putting on more people, we're just looking for their people to do more and give them the tools and mechanisms to do that. So that, I guess, that, that's something from my side as far as the people's side. Go ahead, Bill. I just, I wanted to make sure I understood what was happening there.
Well, I just think that it's important that the two really work very, very closely together. Obviously, that's just an obvious thing. Carol and I are also involved in the, and we've mentioned this, I think, before at another meeting, with the hospital foundation. And they have gone through a similar process whereby they're trying to make sure that everybody's on the same page. You're dealing with, with the public here, talk about community development in these key issues. This is the public development. And I read this all thoroughly, and I do think that Lance and Greg Dykman, who are two of the fine lawyers of this town, have put this together, and I think they've done an excellent job. And I really feel that this is a, an instrument that can bring the two entities together and make it work. And we do need that public support out there, and I think this is, this will help it a great deal.
Okay. Anybody else?
Questions?
Yeah, question, anything, any comments? I mean, I guess-
I mean, a couple of things. One is, you know, we've been, we've been operating to this point with, this has been a contract for services. We've been giving the foundation money, and they've been giving services in, in return. Suddenly, we're basically doubling the amount of money involved, and it's led to more services. Yes. And specifically, those are?
Improved capital campaign, corporate giving, enhanced scholarships, as well as better connection, more effective fundraising because of better connection to the college so that they are doing the activities and raising the funds targeted to what our priorities are. In many ways, what we've done in the past is they've gone out and done the things that they think we want, and they've been the easy ones, which are events and scholarships.
Yeah.
But not really targeting where some of the, the needs are. This provides that, that connection or strengthens that connection to ensure that what they're doing is in tune with our fundraising priorities.
You know, if I understand this right, this is, we're basically sort of giving them kinda like a block grant, is that right? And it's their responsibility to figure out how to use it most effectively. So I'm, I'm, I'm still a little baffled, though, about why there's any discussion in the contract, and maybe Lance can, can straighten me out here. Why is there a discussion in the contract about things that they now reimburse us for? There's still, there's still that, that stuff in there. Aren't we just giving them some fixed amount of money in return for services? They don't need to reimburse us for anything? I don't understand that.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Kiltie, that is almost entirely a function of the, the personnel side of it. Those employees are still on LCCC's HR structure, personnel structure, benefits structure, and all of that. So they are essentially, their payroll is distributed through LCCC's, all of those things. Because we have the structure that does that, they then reimburse us for those services. So that's a service we provide them, is the human resource element of that, to keep the benefits and the system in place so they don't have to replicate and carry their own benefits and to do that. And that's essentially what the reimbursement is. They bring a hundred percent of, a hundred percent of the costs of those personnel are reimbursed back to us.
Well, aren't they then college employees and not employees of something else?
They are. They are. They are in college.
That's just what I wanted to, I wanted to know that.
Yep, college employees staffed, staff the foundation.
Okay. On, on page five, there's some, there's some verbiage in there that says, "The foundation has sole responsibility for fundraising." So I asked the question, what about grants? It seems to me that there is a ton of grants for which this will not be an appropriate structure. Is that, is that wording right then, sole?
Where are you at, Kevin?
Oh, golly, it's, it's on page five, and it's maybe down at the bottom, and it's just a statement in there that says they, they have sole responsibility for fundraising. But, but we've got grants that seem like they don't, they shouldn't run through the foundation either. Can you find that? I don't have a copy in front of me.
This is not a very good copy. You can find it.
Yeah, and you have it there. Yeah, it's under 6.4 fundraising, and it's in paragraph three. Additionally, we acknowledge that the foundation has sole responsibility for fundraising on behalf of LCCC, but there are a bunch of grants that are, in a sense, fundraising that don't go through the foundation. Not unless we wanna push the grants office into the, into this structure too, and that doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
It's been a conversation, and an integrated institutional advancement program, grants are oftentimes in there. Right now, the, the plan would be to have grants connected to the institutional effectiveness element of the college. So that is a conversation. Part of that derives to the interpretation and semantics of the, the language that we're using. There are a variety of grant activities, some of those that are essentially earmarked grants, you know, like Perkins and things like that, that, that I would have a hard time to, like, I wouldn't jump to the concept that that is fundraising for that. The intent of this language here is to ensure that we're not out soliciting private gifts that are outside of what the coordinated activities of the foundation are. I think a language change could work there. I don't know that it would essentially change the, the overall organizational functions. And, and the idea of it, of the wording sole is really to push the college to ensure that when we're talking about going out raising funds, whether it's raising funds, getting cookies and donuts donated for a bake sale or things like that, we at least have a mechanism to coordinate that. Now, knowing that there may be some things that we just see as minimal, that the foundation says, no, that's fine, if you wanna go ask Albertson's for cookies for fundraisers, that's fine, but the intent is to coordinate that process, and that language forces us to do that. But, and we could put primary there, I don't know that it would change the overall function.
Okay. On page three, there was a lot, a lot of discussion on page three about who gets subjected to, you know, LCCC disciplinary standards and so forth. So are, we have two classes of employee here that are subjected to different standards of discipline and have different rights with regard to discipline and things like that? Oh, let me look back. It's page three, it, it, really, it's the, it's an awful lot of the foundation staffing sort of, oh, thanks.
Sorry.
She keeps moving papers in and out in front of me, and I'm getting seasick, so. So if LCCC terminates employment of an employee assigned to the foundation-
That's under the 5-0.
Yeah, 5-0 is really the section I'm talking about here, and, and so is this sort of, I'm just wondering if this is sort of confusing about who gets subjected to, you know, who has to meet certain requirements and who gets subjected to what discipline, and, and on and on.
Really what it comes down to, and that's the, the confusion or the muddiness of these types of arrangements, is it does come down to essentially having a system that's directed and governed over here with an organization that's directed and governed over here, and it requires a level of coordination when we do any type of human resource actions, from discipline to termination to compensation changes and things like that, because there are foundation dollars that also go into that. And so it's a function, how do I say this simply, as long as we carry these employees on our human resources side infrastructure, as long as they are in the LCCC employment making benefits and do all that, which, what every campus is doing across the state in very common, this type of murkiness will be, or this language was intended to at least provide some clarity in how we would coordinate through some of these things. But as long as they are on the LCCC employment side, this type of murkiness is going to continue if they are for that organization. And they need to have that connection to the board of directors within the foundation to illustrate the, Lance, help me out here, the IRS has expectations of separation of organizations for nonprofit status and doing all that good stuff. But the, the more we enmesh and when we use these, these, these employees, staff to that, there's just this sort of murky role that we have to play in working together for employee decisions and actions.
So do we have some employees that are paid by the foundation, some that are paid by the college, and some that are partially paid?
They're all, they're all paid by the college.
Okay.
Hundred percent paid by the college.
All right.
It is a little, it's, it's a moving around of money. We pay the employees, we effectively give them the money for the employees as a fee, and they turn around and give that money, reimburse us back for the employees. So end result is, we paid them the $300,000-
Yeah.
-for the development, or for our fees, for fees. Now, I will say, and I, I think I'm gonna try to bring out what I think are some big points here. We're getting ourselves in a situation where there's some responsibilities that we have to take on that we've never done before, okay? That is, it is our duty to tell them what our expectations of them are. We haven't done that, okay? That is under our roles. It is their responsibility to take that direction and come back to us with a plan to help us meet our objectives. That's the crux of what we're doing here. It's what we never had in place before, maybe it could've been done informally. We didn't do it, shame on us. They didn't come seeking it from us, so that's at least a little bit of the history. So I think that's, that's the major thing. We've taken the administrative hassle on the employee side away from them. Do you remember when we paid fifty percent, they paid fifty, that was, and that's wrought with, well then, who is, has authority over whom? Basically here, we do have authority over these employees, 'cause they are our employees. And so I hope, I, I think that's, you know, simplify isn't the word, it just says, it makes it pretty clear. So if there's somebody, and I guess I'm gonna throw out some hypotheticals, just to make sure that we're all clear on this, let's say there's a foundation staff, or let's say there's an LCCC employee assigned to the foundation project. I mean, I look at it as consultants, you know, they're just, they're effectively, you know, hard hands for the foundation. If we are taking on, and I think where does that, that, that is kinda what the second paragraph addresses, and we're kinda doing what we do with the president, you know, we don't have direct authority over any specific employee here on the college, we look to the president. Now, we can always say, what's going on over in this area? You need to take a look at that person, Joe, et cetera. I think we're getting in the same situation here, where we're looking to our associate vice president to go, you need to evaluate those people, you need to make sure they're doing what we, what both parties need them to do, and that's actually, I think, what gets addressed here in that, in that paragraph too. So I'm hoping that it makes that situation a little bit, because I think that we were in a situation where, when somebody on the foundation staff wanted to, you know, they could play off the college and the foundation, and, and I, I don't know if it ever happened, but I never felt comfortable about that situation. So I think the biggest things is that we've defined the roles, and our role is, we've got to give you direction, that is our duty. You need to come up with a plan for us to get that, to, to fulfill that direction, and, you know, we're the ones that control that direction. And so hopefully they'll, they'll, and I think they're amenable to that, 'cause what else are they gonna do, you know? And then lastly, we do have an out. We have two outs. One is, if they don't perform, we can take, this is a three-year contract, but if it ain't happening, we can, sixty days, is it sixty or thirty? We have a sixty-day notice, we're done with the, with the contract, okay? Or, to address your kind of budget concerns, if we come up at the end of year, well, look, we don't have the money to fork over the 300 grand or whatever we have in there, you know, because of budget constraints across the state, et cetera, or in our own deal, we have the right to terminate that contract. So I feel pretty good about those types of things. Yes, Carol, I'm sorry, I don't need to be beating it up.
Um, I respect your opinion.
Uh-huh.
But I think that this operating agreement with, with the foundation will give us a very clean mechanism for our partnership with them, for our team effort with them, because I think that we need them and they need us. They, we want them to raise money, to give back to the college, and the college gives them the 300 and 300,000 or 306,000 dollars for their employees and for their operating budget. So I think this is a very fair operating agreement. I liked it. I am all for it.
Okay.
And I would like to make the motion that we carry on and present this to the foundation.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now.
I don't know if that was appropriate.
No, it's appropriate. It's appropriate. What we're trying, what we tried to do, and here's the motion we'd like to see, if we can get it beat up here, is that we approve to present this operating agreement to the foundation. If the foundation doesn't have any changes.
Right.
Now, they may. They have, they have, their whole board has not seen this.
They may have seen it.
They have seen it, which is tomorrow night.
Yeah. And, but they may have some problems with it, and if they do, they're gonna have to give them back to us, and we can do that. Now, if they don't have any problems with it, Joe would like to get going with this thing. And this is where I wanna make sure that you're comfortable on the timing side of it. And that if they, if they take this contract verbatim today, that we can just, we can get it signed and get moving forward with what we need to get, get moved forward. So just read, read that motion.
Show me, show me where it is.
It is right here.
The B. No, one more down, right there. Read that.
Okay. That the board of trustees approves to present the LCCC, LCCC Foundation operating agreement to the LCCC Foundation, and if approved by the LCCC Foundation as presented, the board of trustees authorizes the chairman of the board to sign the agreement.
That's what I seconded.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any more discussion? I really wanna make sure people feel comfortable. Yes, Ed?
Just a question, because I think, I think it's pretty obvious, but I think we ought to talk about, we've got changes in public relations here and people positions. And we haven't discussed that, and I know sometimes, I, I think it's appropriate that we look at whether that's all worked out and how that's working for those folks, so there's no, no doubt among the public as to what's going on here, because we don't wanna operate in a fashion that people might not understand, so.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, trustee Moser, just to clarify, so here, here's the process. Should you approve to present this to the foundation, should the foundation approve it without changes, Chairman Thomas would sign that with the president of the foundation board, Ron Raybo, as well as having us sign the appendices and get it to the attorneys for signature for approval to form, all that good stuff. From that, our plan to implement this would be essentially to create the staffing structure, and as of July 1, with the new fiscal year, create two interim appointments. So that would establish the associate vice president of institutional advancement, and, and I would- I would appoint Lisa Murphy as the interim Associate Vice President for a one-year period at the same time to do the backfilling. And I want to point out that their operation runs so well, we've only had to make one adjustment in the PR and marketing area. We're going to appoint an interim Director of Public Relations as well. I've been clear, and I'll continue to be clear, I'm glad you brought it up, Ed, that when we create positions that have additional compensation and a significant change to their responsibilities, we're going to compete those publicly. So, these are interim appointments to get us going on the process. Later on in the fall, we would start the solicitation, the competition for those positions, do the interview process in the spring, and make permanent appointments before the end of the fiscal year next year. So, there will be a competitive process to these positions, and I think the two interims are wonderful, and I certainly hope they apply, but it is going to be an open and competitive process. If they apply or don't apply, or apply and aren't successful, all that good stuff, these individuals have right of return to positions of equitable responsibility, equal compensation, all that good stuff, so they have right of return. So, it does protect the individuals as well, but this isn't just a one step and we're done, and we're going to go. There's a competitive process behind this.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yes, ma'am.
I have one very fast question. Lance, are you happy with this?
I'm always happy with it.
I know, that's not true.
Yes, I have reviewed it. It's gone, and I think there have been several iterations of that that have passed through, and I think we'll look it out where terms should be acceptable to everyone.
Okay, thanks. That was my other question.
And I just, Edwin, you talked about looking at the structure, so from the foundation side, we're looking at getting a new Director of Corporate Giving. Tell me how that hiring process has been going.
Well, that process will be much like you, delegate authority for the administration of this institution to me. The Board of, the Foundation Board would delegate that administrative responsibility to the Associate Vice President to do that, so a portion of that person's time will be to manage the staff and to do that. So, we would initiate the search like we would any LCCC employee. The one difference here is, we would probably have Foundation Board members on that selection committee, much like we've had trustees on the ones with the Associate Vice Presidents. Other than that, the search will look the same as it's done. The Associate Vice President, in this case, Lisa, will be the person facilitating that process, the actual approval to hire. After the selection of the committee, will come to the president, as it does with any LCCC employee. So, the actual process will be almost identical, if not identical, to what we do.
And that's something that's different than we're doing now?
Yes, yes. This cleans up an even murkier relationship, yes.
Do you think the foundation's going to have a problem with that?
Nope, I wouldn't think they will.
I would be surprised if there is.
Do you think they will?
I said I don't think they will.
I just wanted to be clear, because that's what happened four months ago. And so, I don't want that to happen again. I want them to be happy, I want us to run it, they are an LCCC employee, so we need to run it the same way, and, you know, if they're going to be an LCCC employee, I'm going to, as you said, hopefully, it's a competitive process.
And Mr. Chairman, and to Trustee Merrill's comments, the staff of these organizations, in this case, me, as your employee and the Associate Vice President, will be the key elements that will create this partnership and make all the things happen between you as trustees and those of the foundation board, and so we will be held accountable for that, but that also gives us the ability to actually improve the situation and do good things, and I have complete confidence we'll be able to do that.
Okay, any other comments? People have had a chance to look at this agreement. If none, we've got a motion on the floor, and we're going to vote. So, if there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, good. Thank you for your input, and I appreciate that. So, we'll present this to the foundation board and see what they come back with. If they don't come back with anything, we'll execute it and get moving, so. Yes, Mr. Chairman?
If in fact that goes through and is executed, I would appreciate it if we could, the president might notify us that that's taking place.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Moser, I'd be happy to do that. The foundation board will be meeting tomorrow night to act on this, and as soon as I know and it's hot off the press, I will send out a communication to you.
Okay. Last approval item, fiscal year 2012 budget amendments. Carol?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and trustees. At this time of the year, we bring back our adjustments to the current year's budget, so put the other budget out of your mind, this is the current year's budget that we're adjusting. And we have three adjustments, or three funds that we're asking for approval to make adjustments to. The first one is the unrestricted operating fund. As you know, the recapture redistribution component of our state aid does not happen until after the budget has been approved. So, for this year, the redistribution of funds was $1,073,551 that we need to add to the revenue side of the budget, and then the expenditure side will be spread out through the current year's operating. The federal fund, we had an additional grant from the League of Innovation for $40,000. We also received more direct loan funding and Pell funding. So, the League of Innovation, League of Innovation grant was 40,000. The direct student loans was 1.4 million, and the Pell grants was 300,000. For the auxiliary fund, we had, we made some purchases out of the fund balances of the auxiliary rental fund for furniture for the first floor of the Health Sciences Building. Now, that would seem odd, other than we use those rooms for rental, but, and we found that if the furniture that we had in there really wasn't conducive for moving in and out, stacking tables and different chairs. So, they agreed to purchase those, the new furniture for that floor, and then the old furniture will be redistributed through the college and actually have them to areas that don't have to have a lot of new furniture. Then, the Resonance Hall, out of their fund balance, has bought new lounge furniture. If you go to the common area of the Resonance Hall, that's all new furniture there, which was sorely needed. And then, the contract that we have with the Warren Air Force Base generated an additional 250,000 in revenue and expense. So, we're asking that you approve these recommendations or these requests for increases to the budget for the current year. As presented.
Okay.
I was trying to paraphrase.
Can I, let me try to get some clarification questions?
Okay.
I think I understand the unrestricted operating fund. We've got more money than we had budgeted for.
Correct.
That money has been distributed throughout the budget, it's been spent?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. So, that's an in and an out. Am I correct with that? The federal fund, we got $40,000 for student services. I guess really, I'm seeing money coming in that we didn't anticipate. Has it all been spent?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. Shoot, okay. And then, the auxiliary fund?
The auxiliary fund, that's a little different situation with the facility rental funding and the Resonance Hall. Both of those, it wasn't additional money coming in, but it was a use of their fund balance to make those purchases. And then, the Warren Air Force Base additional amount on their performance work statement agreement was money in, money out.
Okay. Kevin?
I was just curious, CTE stands for what?
Current Technical Education.
Oh, okay.
And then, just my other general question, and it may have to do with process, you know, for example, was it, when did we know we were going to get the extra $1 million on the unrestricted operating fund?
It would have been in September, end of August, first of September.
Why don't we adjust the, I guess I'm, why don't we adjust the budget then, or you just don't want to do it 10 times during the year?
Correct. It's to lessen the impact, lessen the change of the impact on the budget. We could do that.
Yep.
It's just that in the past, we've not done it.
And then, the concept here is, is that, okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, that's actually a viable conversation, and Vice President Hoagland and I have had that conversation. If we know the actual impact of the valuation in August or in September, you know, that does give an early opportunity for conversation about a budget amendment that could be looked at in terms of investing in areas that we said, this is our next priority. There's an opportunity there that that money can be significant based on how those show up in August or September, and it may be worthwhile having a conversation about an amendment just for that earlier on in the year than at the tail end of the fiscal year. Now, that has an impact on Jane and the folks that have to manage those types of things, but, you know, you can see, it can be a significant amount of money.
No, and I guess as we go through our governance model, that is one of the things that we need to clarify in, I don't know what section it would be, but, you know, we may want to say, if we know of a change that's going to be made, and it's, you know, I'm not looking for every, you know, there's got to be some cutoff, and, you know, quite honestly, if we run into some money somehow, some way, I'd like to know about it and get it directed in the direction that we want. So, I understand the convenience of doing it at a year end, but you ought to know, so.
Good conversation that we can have in August.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, up, down, increase, which way? In terms of the direct student loans and Pell, what's been the typical there? Are these, the 1.4 million and the 300,000 Pell, is, do we typically see that kind of increase? Is this unusual or not?
I haven't seen one this big before, but we don't know how many students are going to be eligible for Pell, and I may be, I might have Grant jump in here if I get very far, but we get the money that we award for the students to qualify, and we don't always know how many students that, that would be. And so, in this year, we actually had more students that qualified, so we got the additional funding from the federal government.
The reason I ask that is, we know there's a big issue with student loans and Pell grants being cut and stuff, and I was just wondering if our students were being impacted? It seems, you know, I just don't know what.
Well, they would be impacted if they, if the actual amount of the Pell grant was reduced or increased. The impact is directly to the student.
Okay, any other discussion? Or comments? Yes, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendments to the fiscal year 2012 annual budget as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion? I thought you were raising your hand and you were scratching your head. Sorry. Any other discussion? Okay, if none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, just a few additional items. There's various reports that are sitting out there for us to take a look at and so on, contracting procurement, various meetings and summaries of some of our study sessions and historical list of motions, those are out there. Shoot, I need to, I need to get a new deck of this. Okay, and then, I guess our next events, we're off for a little while, aren't we?
There's a luncheon on the 29th.
Okay.
The surgical.
Surgical.
Tech awards.
And then, we're going to be off all the way to Frontier Days.
July 18.
Yeah.
So, Joe organizes something regarding.
Yeah, Joe said he would organize, so. Okay, any other public comment on anything they would like to talk about in relation to the college? I don't want to hear what Aunt Lettie's having for her birthday cake.
Is now, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I move that the board go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter and naming opportunities.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I got a second? Okay. Any discussion? None, let's take a vote. Time to go into executive session. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, great. Meeting is adjourned. We're going to go into executive session in seven minutes.